About that.
You have any, Randy?
Oh, look at there.
So, we're going to bring this meeting to order. And Commissioner Nichols, would you read us in the invocation and pledge, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for allowing us to be here tonight doing the county's business. Dear Lord, we pray that you'll be with us, guide us, lead us, and direct us. We pray for our military overseas, pray for our first responders, dear Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get an approval of the agenda, please?
Motion to approve.
That motion is seconded in discussion. Hearing nine, all in favor? Aye. Any citizens to be heard, Jess? And we invite into public hearings, turn it over to the county administrator.
Technically, it's a law and business, but yes.
Well, that's not what my agenda reads. I am on time and...
Okay, okay, okay. We had to correct, we had to correct. Thank you, Bob. Turn it over to Randy.
Yes, thank you. We're here today to talk about our current fiscal year financial projections, where we think we're going to end the year, and to hopefully get some board direction and make some decisions on the new positions for this fiscal year that were budgeted but have not been filled yet based on board direction. So, as I go through the presentation, I'm going to be rounding, so please stop me if you're not following me because what I'm going to be saying isn't going to match exactly the number that we have on the screen. So, this first slide that we're looking at, and what we have here is our general fund, budgeted revenue, budgeted expense, projected revenue, and projected expense. On our revenue side, since these are our general fund, what this includes is all of our state revenues that are passed to the county, our ad valorem, our public service tax, our communication service tax, a little bit of interest earnings, and then our B-O-C-C departmental revenue. So, that's what is in our budgeted revenue category. And these are our primary revenues that we collect that are unrestricted and can be used for any public purposes, and they are also used to fund our constitutional officers. You may notice that... Ooh, where did I go? You may notice that our budgeted revenue of 33.7 million and our expense of 34.1 million, those do not equal. I have removed our cash forward from the budget for this comparison. You know, we're required to have a balanced budget, and in the past, we have been fairly comfortable budgeting about $350,000 to $500,000 cash forward because we felt like our revenues were going to come in higher, and so that has been something that we have typically done, and this current fiscal year is no different. So, it was about $441,000. If you were to add that to our budgeted revenue there, those numbers would balance between the revenue and the expense. For these projections, I want to make clear... Jess, go back one, I'm sorry. For these projections, I want to make clear that what we're talking about here, this is our status quo operation. So, this is how we are operating right now, and we're going to project at first based on how we're currently staffed, as if these new positions did not exist and they had not been requested. And you can see that our projected revenue is 33.4 million, which is just less than 254,000 less than we budgeted. And you remember, we expected that we were going to have a significant loss from our ad valorem. And on our expense side, for our status quo operations, we're actually on track to spend about $1.9 million less than we budgeted to spend. And of course, most of that savings is going to be due to the board's direction at that previous special meeting, that we do not fill these newly budgeted positions until at least the third quarter of this fiscal year. Next. 1.9 less than we budgeted to spend is our projected expense, yes. So, on the previous slide, I mentioned that we expected a significant loss in revenue because of our ad valorem error, but we have had other revenues that have performed significantly better this year than expected, and that has helped us to recover all but about $254,000 of that ad valorem loss. And we do have some other departmental revenues and smaller revenues that will come in more or less than budgeted, but those amounts and those revenues, they're not significant, and they do not drastically change the projections that we are talking about here. So, for our ad valorem, our budgeted expected loss was about $2.3 million. We based that projection on 95% of the total revenue that we would have collected from ad valorem normally, but realistically and historically speaking, we collect anywhere between 96 and 96.5% on that ad valorem because not all of our taxpayers take advantage of that early pay discount, and that's a portion of why we only budget the 95%. You can see that our... That brings our actual projected loss to about 2.1 million rather than the 2.3. And then, our PST is performing very well. We're coming into the part of the year where our utility bills are going to be higher. So, the projection for the PST is that we'll collect about $324,000 more than we budgeted. And just a reminder on this revenue, on January 1st of 2019, that is when we removed the 500-kilowatt exemption, and then we raised the rate from 7% to 9%, and that was effective April 1st of 2022. So, last fiscal year, '22, '23, that was the year, the first full year we had of the increased PST rate, but it did take some time to get all of our sellers remitting correctly and getting the correct rate on their bills, and we worked with the internal auditor through that process. So, now we have all of our sellers, they're all remitting properly, and so now we're seeing the true impact of that rate increase, and that's part of the reason why that PST is performing so well. And of course, we're seeing, so seeing some growth in the county, some new construction, and that continues to make that PST one of our stable and very critical revenues in our general fund.
And that is, like she said, that is based on current year run rate. So, and that's not... We have the summing up, which we'll be normal collect a little bit more as well.
For our state, half-cent sales tax revenue, state of Florida is overall seeing tremendous growth from both new residents and just tourism traffic. So, those state sales tax, they're performing very well, and then the county is benefiting that as well. Fiscally constrained, our very last one, that was, that turned out to be a pretty big savior for our situation this fiscal year, and I want to explain how we got to where we are. So, historically, each year in January, we received a one lump sum payment of this revenue. In January of 2023, we received our $1.4 million, which pretty closely aligned with what we had budgeted, so we just put it in the bank and rock on. Well, in July of 2023, we received another disbursement from the state for about $742,000. And at that point, I communicated with finance, we kind of asked some questions about why did we get this, but we were so late in the budgeting process for the fiscal year we're in now that we didn't have time to properly research and determine, hey, is this going to be recurring every year? Was this some kind of one makeup, leftover COVID money? Who knows? And so, we kept the budget with a small increase from the previous year. And so, now we know that we're actually going to collect about $2.6 million. So, that has helped out significantly, and now we are fairly certain that that is something that we can count on each year for that revenue to come in like that. And so, that was extremely helpful in the situation we had this year.
We're going to continue to lobby for those... We've had it for the past three years, and this year, Commissioner Thomas and the Florida Association of Counties made sure that our representatives understood how important that was, is to continue that and to make sure that is consistently funded at 100%. And it went through, and hopefully that will, that should continue. So, thank you.
Jess, can you go to the next one? So, we talked about our revenue side, and this is on our expense side. So, on October 30th, 2023, that's when we had the special meeting and the board directed staff to not fill those newly budgeted positions for the fiscal year until at least the third quarter. And of course, that resulted in a reduction in our budgeted expenses, that alone of just under $1.5 million. We also immediately suspended all purchases that were not absolutely necessary to operations, and so those actions have resulted in a projected savings to the general fund of $1.9 million. Included in that, by the way, our health department, they have advertised... This is the first year that they requested funding for a dentist, and they advertised and advertised for months and months and months, and they couldn't get any interest, and so they have returned that $72,000 that the board approved for the dental funding back, and that is included in that $1.9 million savings. Next slide, Jess. So, another way we can look at what, where we're at is our revenue and expense over and unders. So, these amounts that we're looking at on the screen, these are known actuals, so something that is already occurred or that David and I have a high degree of certainty will occur. So, our revenue under includes our ad valorem error plus our $441,000 cash forward that we budgeted this fiscal year. So, that was basically the hole we were starting out in, and that brings our total between those two combined to under, just under 2.6 million. Our revenue over includes our state and departmental revenues that are performing veterans unexpected, and we just talked about those significant ones on the previous slide. Our expense over, that includes our general property vehicle liability insurance for this fiscal year. This has already been paid for the full fiscal year. We budgeted just under $700,000, and the costs came in at $900,000. So, we already know, coming out of the gate, we had that $200,000 overage on our insurances. And then, our expense under, that's going to include those positions and the deferrals, those operational savings that we just talked about. So, all of these previous items that we just talked about, that is going to culminate in what allows us to make a projection of where fund balance will be in the general fund at the end of this fiscal year and then beyond into '24, '25. And I just want to remind us that we're still talking about all of our status quo operations. These projections and what we just talked about, they do not include those new positions. So, before we look at our fund balance projection, it's important to understand what our target is. And I want to point out here that I'm looking backwards on our actual expenses from last year. Anytime our expenses increase, our recurrent expenses, we're going to have a fluctuate in that minimum and maximum target, they're going to creep up, but because we have our actual expenses from '22, '23, that's how this was calculated. Last year, the expenses of the B-O-C-C excluding our standalone operating funds, so we're excluding the building department, we're excluding the road department, MSBU, our constitutional officers, they're not included in that, those were just under 15 million. So, that puts our minimum target at about 3.7 million. Of course, that's 25% of our annual expenses, and our maximum target at 4.9 million, or 33% of the annual expenses. And as a side note here, the constitutional officers, as you know, they each have their own unique fund that holds their fund balances. We also monitor those constitutional officer funds. They are subject to the same fund balance requirements that the B-O-C-C is, they're just not included here in the B-O-C-C's target and projection. Anybody have any questions before I go any further? Okay. So, our general fund, beginning fiscal year fund balance was just under 6.2 million, about 41% of our target. If you remember back to our special meeting in October, David and I explained that we were making whatever maneuvers we could at that time so that we could prop up the general fund fund balance and insulate it as much as possible from that ad valorem error, and because we were still in October, we still had time to do that because we hadn't officially closed out the previous fiscal year. So, we took some transfers from some funds where we might normally say, this fund is, you know, it's a little shaky, let's just let that slide this year and watch it, such as the road and the MSBU fund. We also had about $770,000 in local assistance and tribal consistency funds, grants, grant funds, whoo, that we made that decision to go ahead and use. What that did was it allowed us to back out about $381,000 in general fund expense for EMS wages and about $371,000 in MSBU wages expense. So, specifically how that impacted the general fund is that that transfer from the MSBU fund was a little shaky, and we didn't want to hurt it, but by backing those expenses off, we were able to take that transfer and prop up the general fund even more. And so, basically, what that did is it left us with a pretty robust starting fund balance in the general fund, and it bought us some time to get to where we are today so that we could work through the impacts of our ad valorem error. So, on our status quo projection for our ending fund balance this fiscal year is 7.1 million, which puts us at 48% or almost a half a year of B-O-C-C expenses. And remember that our target, our maximum target is 33% of four months, so we're well over that with this projection. So, anything we talk about going further, anything we add on top of this, we're going to be taking down on that 7.1 million. And after we get to the end of the presentation, when the board is discussing, I have a very quick calculator in here where if the board says, you know, this many positions for this many months, I can tell you what that's going to do to our general fund. We'll do that at the end. Before we move on, I wanted to give you a look at the history of the general fund fund balance. I believe the colors kind of speak for themselves, but of course, the red indicates years where there was a significant problem with fund balance. Yellow was fund balance territory that was still concerning, and we were monitoring it, and then the green indicates where we were in good shape. You'll notice that after '15, '16, we had a pretty significant decrease in fund balance. And if, I think there were a couple of you on the board at that time, you may remember that we intentionally spent some of this fund balance because we felt like it was building up past a point of what was needed. And we learned some lessons from that, and certainly, the intentional burning off of fund balance for recurring expenses is something we want to be mindful about. As anything that's unforeseen that comes up during a fiscal year, you can turn that intentional use of fund balance into a concern pretty quickly. And so, we keep that as a lesson in our back pocket we learned, and we will be very careful about that in the future. Now, as a little bit of personal information, I was actually hired on with the county at the clerk's office in June of 2011, so that second red bar from the left. When I was hired, the county was actively following at the time, and instead of working 80 hours per pay period, I only worked 72 in my first several months of employment with the county. Totally different situation than we're in now, it doesn't compare, but what it does speak to is the level of commitment it takes for the county to manage this and manage these financial ups and downs, and it demonstrates that we understand the importance, now we do, of maintaining a healthy fund balance in our general fund. So, as we're moving through the rest of this, I just want you to just remember this chart, we have been in way worse shape than we are now, and with careful planning and monitoring, we are well positioned to deal with the situation that we are in today.
We had this same situation occur where that, that the governor, the government would be in here, state would be taking us over. So, that's how close we were. And also, just a couple of things. One, and I believe it was '13, '14, '15, Greg, is when we adopted, the board adopted the fund balance policy. So, therefore, at any time that the fund balance top, our fund balance dips below the minimum that the board is, that is set as it is based upon the percentage of expenses, that we have to create a plan to get it back there. So, we have moved, we've got that stopgap in now to where we say we burn down, if we burn down so low, we get below that, we got to have a plan to get it back within a certain amount of years. And also, you'll notice how it increases as well, and your fund balance will increase. In theory, it should increase your expenses because it's 25 or 33% of whatever your expenses are within the general fund. So, you should see that number incrementally increase as well.
It's almost like you read my notes.
That's right.
Next slide, please. Next slide, please, Jess. So, now we're going to look at the sheriff's fund, and for the current fiscal year, you'll probably remember the sheriff requested those nine new positions. Two of them were 911 dispatchers, one was a bailiff, and six were certified law enforcement officers. Because of the state requirement to have the 911 dispatchers that are certified to give emergency medical life-saving guidance over the phone, the two 911 positions and the bailiff were left in the sheriff's budget, but at the February 20th regular board meeting, the board approved a budget amendment that held back about $571,000 in funding for the sheriff for the six law enforcement positions until we could get to where we are today and have this projection. So, if the direction from the board today was to move forward with filling these positions for the rest of this fiscal year would add back about $188,000 to the sheriff if they were brought on June 1, so that calculation is based on hiring six employees June 1 for the cost of about just under $7,900 per month. Per employee, yes. So, this is where our sheriff's fund balance target is. Last year, the sheriff's expenses were 14 million, and the sheriff needs to maintain at least 3.5, and then maximum cap on that is about 4.6 million. And again, same principle applies, as the sheriff's fund expenses go up, that fund balance target goes up with it.
Randy?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that you hear this a million times, but what's our ad valorem?
Our property tax? Yes.
Sam, the numbers are very...
Oh, I'm sorry, 7.9.
But the figure is almost what the sheriff's budget is.
They're close, they're close. So, our beginning fund balance, and again, status quo for the sheriff, as if we didn't do anything different than we're doing now, our beginning fund balance was just under 3.5 million, or just over, I'm sorry. Last fiscal year, the sheriff actually returned about $413,000, and that helped prop that, his fund balance up to that 3.5 million. But the projection for the ending fund balance is just under 2.8 million. So, that's only down, that's only about two and a half months of expensive, expenses. And this also, this projection, it does not include any return that the sheriff may have at the end of this fiscal year, but of course, if he did return, or the sheriff did return funds, it would stay in the sheriff's fund, it would increase the sheriff's fund fund balance. And also, what is affecting this projection, in the current year, we actually transferred $306,000 from the sheriff's fund to the 1-cent sales tax, and that was for the construction of the maintenance facility. So, and of course, that's not a recurring cost, so it's absolutely an appropriate use of fund balance. But what it did is it actually kind of dropped this below where it needs to be. So, it may be in our best interest to consider refunding that $306,000 to the sheriff's fund for now, so that it temporarily kind of starts to bring this fund back up to where it needs to be, and then we could talk about maybe taking that portion back from the sheriff over a period of years, so it eases the fund, eases the impact on the sheriff's fund fund balance. And then, just like we talked about in the B-O-C-C, we budgeted $441,000 in cash forward to balance our budget, the sheriff did as well, so there was actually $800,000 in cash forward. 300 of it was for the transfer for the maintenance building, and then the other 500,000 was brought forward to balance the budget. And so, as David just mentioned, and we're going to talk about more, we have that five-year plan that we need to start implementing. When we see one of our funds start dropping below target, we need to figure out how we're going to get it back. Refunding that, that 300,000 to the sheriff is a good place to start, and it starts to clock on, now we have a plan, let's do this.
And that would come from revenue stabilization fund or where?
Well, we actually, what we did is we took it out of the sheriff's fund, and we put it in 1-cent sales tax. So, we could just reverse that, we could take it out of 1-cent sales tax, give it back to the sheriff, or we could take it from the general fund, give it back to the sheriff, we could bring it from the revenue stabilization. So, we could work out the least unintended consequences on the other fund that it came from, that's what we would be looking for.
Right now, we're running, one of the reasons, we're just running real short on revenue stabil... Excuse me. 1-cent sales tax spending, we're not short, we're just tight. And so, it may be that we pull it out of revenue stabilization, or just pull it out of our reserves and refund that. That'll be part of, at the end of this, I'll be making a motion, so, or a, not a motion, but a recommendation. That'd be part of it.
Fiscally. Moving on to fire rescue. For the current fiscal year, fire rescue requested nine new full-time positions, and the purpose of this was to staff the new engine company in the northeast portion of the county that would serve about 4,200 addresses. We actually increased the MSBU rate for the current fiscal year so we could fund those positions. However, when we were notified that we had this problem with ad valorem that was included in the board's direction to defer, and we haven't filled those positions yet. And so, filling those positions as of June 1, if that was the board's direction, that would add back about $241,000 to the fire rescue budget for the remainder of the year, or about $6,700 per employee per month. Now, fire rescue staff, they're allocated to two funds, our general fund and our MSBU fund, and so we need to consider the impacts to our fund balance separately. And I know y'all are familiar with our allocation, but as a reminder, it's 47% on the general fund and 53% to that MSBU fund. And so, the general fund impact for hiring those nine positions June 1 would be about $113,000, or about $3,100 per employee per month. And for the MSBU fund, the impact is $128,000, or about $3,500 per employee per month. And let's look at where our target is for our MSBU fund. And just so you know, our general fund is wrapped up in our projection that we already went through for that side, and this is just specifically for the MSBU fund now. So, actual expenses in '22, '23 were just over 2.2 million, and then our minimum target we're looking at is about $558,000 for our 25%, and then we cap out at our maximum about $736,000 at our 33%. Our beginning fund balance for our MSBU, we were right in range at 28%, $618,000. Our status quo operations, that projection on our ending fund balance is about 1.2... million dollars, or almost seven months of expenses, which of course is a dramatic increase, but it's mostly due to we have these nine positions for this new engine company that we haven't filled yet. And so, once we increase our operational costs, that seven months' worth of expenses will, will not remain in fund balance. Along with our previously discussed positions, there were some other new positions planned in the, planned in the general fund, two maintenance technicians, one for our parks department and one for our facilities department. If those positions were to be filled June one, the cost would be about twenty-nine thousand dollars, or thirty-six hundred dollars per employee, per month. So our remaining non-public safety positions are all for our golf course. So in the current year budget, there were twelve full-time employees included. Of those, five of those positions are existing and are either filled now or have been filled in this fiscal year. For our new positions, there are actually about thirty total additional employees included in the golf course operational plan, but a lot of them, a portion of them are part-time, so I have combined them. And what we're looking at here is in order to have full-time employee equivalent numbers, which would be twenty-one. You know that we have established a unique fund for the golf course, so it's siloed and it's got a sand on its own, once it gets operational. Last year, the golf course generated very little revenue and the only revenue was from the sale of the golf carts that we had purchased, but the remaining expenses were covered by the transfers from the sewer fund and our general fund. And so, once, once the golf course is operational and it's open to the public and it's generating revenue, it will actually become one of our five largest operating funds. And so, it will also need to build its own fund balance of at least the twenty-five percent of our annual operating costs, just like all of its other, all of our operating funds.
And it's being set up as, as a full profit, not, not to be a drag on the, on the general fund as well. That's the way it's set up, that's the way it was built, and that's the way it should, based on everything we've done, we project that's what'll happen, it should net or kinda profit each year.
Is that, is that still using some of our sewer funding to, to go there to support it without actually having to use tax, taxpayer funds for it?
That's a, uh- Uh, that number is, right now, two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars will go over there each year, so that's a, that's a mulligan. It's, it's given, but yes, it, it'll, it, it will pay for itself.
Operational costs, that's nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, two-nine-six, that's per year, right?
The actual overall operating cost a full year would be about one-point-six million dollars.
Your revenue, three-point-seven.
Do you have a whole-part projection of when we'll go into the black in that fund?
Uh, we'll, this year naturally, we'll, we'll, if we start in August sixteenth, naturally, this year, we'll be, we'll lose about four-hundred thousand dollars. Next year, though, it should net itself out, there's no reason why not, it won't. So, yeah.
So just how we looked at all of these other positions in all of our different funds, if we were to hire these positions on June one, that will increase the cost of operations for the fiscal year by about two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars, or about thirty-five-hundred dollars per employee, per month. And as David said, you know, depending on the opening date of the golf course, there could be some revenue to offset that expense, but right now, there isn't. So if there is no revenue in the current fiscal year, the general fund and the sewer fund combined will have to make up for that and they'll have to cover all the expenses for the fiscal year.
Randy, I'm not being funny, you're talking about this current fiscal year?
Yes, I'm talking about this current fiscal-
No, next year, we're talking about right now.
Right now, yes.
I mean fiscal year.
Okay. Any questions before we move on? Okay. So as of right now, we are looking at the potential of holding the milage rate as it is currently, which as Chair asked, is seven-point-nine. We have already started meeting with B O C C departments regarding budget requests for next fiscal year, constitutional officer requests are due May one, nonprofit funding requests are due June one. We're currently scheduled to have our first budget workshop on June third, it may make sense to move that back to the second meeting in June, so we have as much information as possible for that workshop. Holding that milage rate at seven-point-nine, it means a couple of things have to happen and one of them is our value increase, it has to come in at twelve percent or better. Some good news that we had this year, our F R S rates, they increased very little, it's the smallest increase that I've seen since, in thirteen years of being with the county, so that's good. We're anticipating, of course, that we're gonna have about a six percent increase in our health insurance costs. We haven't discussed whether the board wants to consider absorbing those again this year, we have in the past. Are we gonna give a COA, are we gonna give two percent, are we skipping this year? Those questions. Our utilities, we know those go up every year, but in any other unknowns that we just don't know right now, that could have an impact on our ability to stay at the same milage rate, but right now, we're looking that it's, it's, it's looking good.
That's where we, we, the first test was this fiscal year. And then the next test is what happens after that and how do we recover? And that's what this, that's the good news is, is based on where we are today and the projections that we're running, we don't, we don't see, we don't see, unless there's something that comes up that's abnormal, we, we think we can, at least next fiscal year, we can survive without any type of tax increase, as the way it stands, the information that we have today.
And we'll know those definite numbers by July first or June?
The, the property appraiser will certify the values by July one. He usually provides us with an estimate around June first or the first week of June and then we use that to work towards the remaining part of our budget process until we have that certification. Did you wanna say something else? Okay, Jesse.
Randy, I wanna ask something.
Okay.
On the seesaw, those are just for us to understand what is going on?
Yes, yes, that-
That's like, high, high, high?
Very high level and, you know, the ability to be able to stay where we are, it's, it looks good now, but as David said, we don't know what we don't know and if something comes up that's unforeseen, that seesaw could shift the other way and we're, we're in, you know, we're looking at, hey, do we need to go up to eight? But right now, we're not saying that at all.
And what that assumes is we assumed a, you know, what would be our typical some increases for our folks, and a COA, I should say, across the board, and any, you know, we need projected increases that we felt would happen, our F R S, insurances, all that good stuff. We put that in there, now it didn't load in, you know, if we all of a sudden have a, like have a surge of employees and, you know what I mean? That doesn't-
We're in good shape on the seesaw.
We're in good shape. If, you know, next year, if we stay the way we are, if you stay the way we are, we're in great shape, fantastic shape.
And just to verify, y'all have already accounted for the C H P, all those things that, that we get historically every year?
Yes, yes.
That's barring some crazy C H P number, but we've been consistent around between four or six percent on C H P and F R S is a historic low, which is a perfect time. So, you know, our insurances went up forty percent last year, so hopefully that won't happen again, but we do have an increase for that as well in this projection. So barring anything outside of those, we're, we're, we're in good shape.
I can ask this now or later, but with the, you said the P S C tax did a lot better than what we had originally expected, so are we looking at, I know we talked about not holding the milage rate, are we looking at trying to decrease that all since it's done better than it, than projected, or are we just gonna try to stay the same?
Absolutely not, there's no way I'm gonna recommend any type of decrease in any revenue until we get through this next fiscal year, we're taking the hit that we hit, we just, you just, that's, that's putting the gun to your head. That's my recommendation, that would be my recommendation.
Do we know about the F R S, do they just have a, a good year in their investments? Is that what offset our numbers?
Well, they've been hammering on us the last several years and I think a lot of it is because of the unfunded actuarial liability that they had, but they're very well-funded for a retirement system and I think we're at eighty-nine percent, eighty-eight percent. And so what I think is that we're crossing that threshold where they've caught up and they're comfortable with that outstanding liability. And so, it was, it was very small, I was very surprised, I had to look at it several times to make sure, we've never seen it come in, or increase as it did this year, not even close.
And last year, last year, it was a heck of a hit.
It was a-
I mean, it, it took a heck of a hit, so.
Everyone still has the option of being in the standard F R S or the investment plan, right? I know there's been some talk about moving everything to the investment, as of right now, it's still, both, both the plans are available according to what, what you want.
And I wanna go back to the P S T comment, Commissioner Camp. You know, P S T has become one of our, it's, it's a very stable revenue, whereas you look at your ad valorem and from time to time, it can be a little more volatile, this year's situation set aside, but if you have, you know, economic conditions that, you know, values went down and years ago, we, in Wilkow County, we rode the values down a long time while our neighboring counties were going up and so your ad valorem is, is a little more volatile than like a P S T because you have those utilities, not only that, but you're, it's instant, it comes on instantly. So we're at ad valorem, you're new construction, you're waiting for a following year for it to get on roll, somebody moves into a house, they set up their sewer and water and their utility account, they're paying P S T right then. And so it has become one of our very dependable, stable revenues.
And also, as you know, the legislature continues to attack ad valorem and as Mr. Thomas will tell you, that's a, that is a, that is a hot topic every year and so therefore, there's continuing to be these cuts and increasing here, increasing exemptions, and after a while, what'll happen is they're not gonna be able to cover small counties. Then all of a sudden, it starts decreasing and so therefore, we need to continually, you know, protect, diversify our, our income, but also, part of my recommendation was, you know, we, there's no way that I would ever recommend, you know, with as many unknowns as we got and coming out of what we've come out of, you know, we need to hold par, we need to hold serve at where we are, to be physically responsible, hold service to where we are. Unless we see some dramatic, another dramatic income, then yeah, we could, but right now, we've gotta get, realize where we bring it on, part of this, my recommendation, bring on, we bring on all the staff, that's a slug of folks and the golf course and sheriff and fire and all, so that's a big slug at one time, which we can handle it, but we need to let the, let the dust settle just a little bit before we make any dramatic moves.
Jess, will you go to the next slide, please? So this is looking out even further than the end of this fiscal year, this will actually be the ending fund balance projection for twenty-four, twenty-five, and you see I have two different projections here. So if, if, again, based on a lot of assumptions, our increase in valuation, our constitutional officers' requests are not too drastically different from what they are this year, that the golf course is sustaining itself and it's not requiring more than, you know, about two-hundred thousand dollars worth of support from the general fund. I've also included that the B O C C makes up in some way for the sheriff maintenance building transfer, that three-hundred-thousand and six-thousand dollars. And so, that projection would take us to about six-point-six million, about forty-four percent. That is about five and a half months of expenses there, so we're still higher than we need to be. Adding those new positions that we're talking about today, as of June one of this fiscal year, that drops that projection down to about six million, or about four and a half months of expenses. And so we're still a little high, but we're creeping back down, we're, we're, we're more in line with our target. And I think we've mentioned this already, but as we add these new proj-, uh, new positions in, this sets a new baseline for our minimum amount of funding we need for operations each year and what that fund balance target will be, so they go up together, your expenses increase, your fund balance target increases as well. And so that, for the general fund, it would increase that target to just under three-point-nine million for our twenty-five percent and the maximum to five-point-one million at our thirty-three percent. And again, any revenue that the golf course collects this year, that's gonna impact these projections positively, so if, you know, if the golf course collects a hundred thousand dollars, then our projection on our fund balance is gonna increase by that as well because we don't have to send that money to the golf course. Also, I would like to point out that even if it was the board's direction today to go ahead and hire these positions, it is extremely unlikely that June one, we would have these positions walking in the door. All of our agencies are having tremendous difficulty right now in filling positions, so I would say that my projection here is, is fairly conservative just based on the amount of warm bodies that we would be asking to come in, in the door within a little over a month from now.
Yeah, 'cause I think I, I talked to Louie and, you know, we said we're giving the positions today, it's eight, nine months of getting that correct, you know, so, you know, we're saving that money during that time as it keeps on, and same thing probably with the sheriff, you know, trying to get people, we're giving him six, it's gonna be months and months before you get some hired.
Yeah, every, everybody that I know that's trying to fill positions is in the same boat right now, it, you know, you advertise three and four times just to get six and seven applications to have a pool of people to interview from, so I, I think realistically, you know, it, it, even if you said hire these people today, it's probably next fiscal year before the majority of them, we could actually get them on board and get the positions filled. All right, before we move to our board discussion, I want you to consider my umbrella graphic on the screen. This to me, I think, is an excellent visual representation of the function of the general fund. Our general fund is our umbrella and it covers or is responsible for each of our other county funds. All of our constitutional officer funds, all of our operating funds, they're all under the protection of our general fund umbrella. So when we think we're in good shape in the general fund, yes, we very well may be, that could be the case, but we need to consider our other fund balance deficits in, in our other operating funds, such as our, our sheriff and our road department and now our golf course added to that as well. So just, just something to, to think about, I think it's a good representation of, of what the general fund's role is when it comes to making sure all of our other funds are in good shape, they're all under our umbrella's protection. No. Jess, please, thank you, okay. So this, we'll, we'll move into discussion, but this table right here, this is gonna represent how the projection will change if the board was to direct the staff to fill the new positions as of June one. Again, realistically, knowing that that's unlikely that we could fill those. So our ending fund balance is gonna change, this is the full-on projection on the screen right here, so we've got all of our sheriff's employees, all of our fire rescue employees and all of our golf course employees. And then, again, any revenue we collect above that is gonna impact our projections positively. So for example, our adjusted projected fund balance of about six-point-five million, that's showing on the screen up there, if the golf course collects a hundred thousand and we don't have to send that over there from the general fund, that increases to six-point-six million. But until there's actually revenue coming in for the golf course, I have to assume, we have to assume, that the general fund will need to support that temporarily until it gets up and running. And, and think, you know, think about our umbrella, seriously, depending on what is, what is decided today, we're starting to see a little bit of concern with our sheriff's fund and the general fund and our sheriff's fund, that's our two largest operating funds, so if you wanna think of them combined, the fund balances combined, should be a minimum of about seven-point- of about $7.2 million. And we're well over that now, but the sheriff is projected to drop down to about $2.7 million, which is 20%, and he needs to be at a minimum of 25, I'm sorry, not he, the sheriff's fund needs to be. And so we need to consider how, how the trickle effect of what we do, and we don't want to lose our ability for our general fund umbrella to protect everybody. So as we mentioned, you know, we do have that five-year plan where we can establish how we're going to correct an operating fund that is starting to show some concern over the fund balance minimum, and so we can add a dozen, you know, you can do that a bunch of different ways, we talked about the $300,000, you know, reverting that back, you can, you can just simply transfer money from the general fund, you can make it that simple, but we can, we can talk through that plan of how we get it to where it needs to be. And so that, that's part of how we recover those deficiencies in those other operating funds. We do have some two members of our audit committee meeting right here, right now, but the audit committee has not had an opportunity to look at this other than when it went out in the agenda, if they look at that stuff and talk through these fund balance projections yet. We have that meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., and I assume David and I will be providing these same projections to them, and request that they vote on a recommendation at that time. And other than that, if you have any questions?
I got, I got, before you do that, the, I want to first thank Brandy for all the hard work on this. It's been a couple of months of intense work, and we kind of sped it up because we, we got a couple, we got some answers to some questions that we were looking for, that was primarily for the rest of this year, but then next year. So therefore, we, we were able to speed up getting information to you guys, and I know the sheriff and Louie, they, they need, they need folks yesterday, so, and so do other operations do as well. But I want to thank the board, because the recommendation I've been ready to make is based, is, is due to your diligence in, in, in making recommendations, and also that to curb this, and to stop the bleeding, and to make, make some hard decisions that were probably politically not the best in the world, as you were worried about your politics, but you were worried about the county. And also, I want to thank, you know, but coming out of that, Sheriff, he did exactly what you asked. Thank you, Sheriff Miller, and Jan, our staff, all our directors and managers that are here, they all stepped up, did the same thing, we really locked everything down. Sometimes storms in life are, make you better, and this is one I think has made us better. So, but I'm, I, I'm going to recommend to the board that we go ahead and fund, fully fund all of the, the budget back again, to fill all the positions, dove the golf course up, to go ahead and fill these positions, and also for us to go ahead and transfer as soon as, soon at year-end, transfer to the sheriff's office, or whenever we, whenever we can, where we feel we need to, to the sheriff's fund, the $300,000 that we had moved over. Then we'll, then, you know, then we'll wait and see if the sheriff returns money, that will actually go back into his fund, whatever, I don't know his business, but that may, it may cure itself, if not, we probably, we're probably going to be okay. So based on that, I said, we, we looked at this year, but we were also more concerned about next year, so my recommendation to that, but also my recommendation would be that if y'all would approve that, moving forward, go ahead and fund it pending audit, audit committee approval tomorrow of, of the recommendation to move forward with fully funding.
Have a motion and second, any discussion?
I like what David just said, you know, obviously, you know, I told David and I told Brandy, we've been collecting these funds for the MSBU, you're looking at, sheriff will tell you what, you know, six months probably getting people hired or more, same thing with Louie, so we've been collecting these funds, I'm like David, I want to give the sheriff's money back to him, the sheriff has always been good about giving money back, what he, I know he's familiar with money, trust me, I'm not a hater when it comes to money, so to give it back. So I know financially, we're in a good spot, probably better than we've ever been by looking at the graphs, I just, I'm worried about the next year. Hopefully, come June or July 1st, we meet that mark of the 12%, because that's going to really tell the tale of where we're going to be at for the next year. We got it this year, there's no question, we're financially better than we ever been, but July 1st, we're, we're, we tell, you know, we've made a commitment to the fire department, to the sheriff's office, obviously, I'm big on public safety, and that's, but here we are, going to open our golf course around August, and we can't do that without people, so I definitely want to try to fund, I know we recommended some other positions, county staff ones too, that we need to take a look at, so.
By the time we get all these positions filled, it's going to be well into the next year, so it's.
That's exactly right.
So we're still going to be saving money. We're still going to be saving money for quite a while.
For quite a while, and I'd definitely like to know what the audit committee says tomorrow, but my motion stands with Ralph and Hess.
And does this include the two positions for maintenance and facilities, any parks and, okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's, golf course, sheriff, fire department, there's, Greg James, want to say something?
I followed all the numbers, very good presentation. The umbrella thing, correct me if I'm wrong, the bottom line is, is we need $7 million between the sheriff's fund and the general fund minimum.
Yes.
And we currently have, how much? We're estimating?
Well, we would have, uh.
Well, about $9 million, well over $9 million between the two, so we have a surplus of $2 million, right? So now let me ask about the golf course. Your current year budget is $858,000. You cannot change that budget legally without an unanticipated revenue, which we don't have. You've currently spent $607,000, so we have about $150,000 left, which you're going to spend with your current staff. So are you going to overspend the current year budget? That's the technical question.
We have some capital expenditures that are in that golf course fund, and probably what's going to have to happen is they're going to have to move off of the golf course fund to accommodate the operations this year.
Because I, I understand and I agree, you're not going to hire 21 people on day one.
But you're saying we're already on track.
We're already on track just from the full budget.
Yes.
If not more.
We are going to have to move those for the pro shop and the concession stand, those expenses out of the golf course fund.
Into what, facilities?
Either one cent sales tax, or revenue stabilization, or we're going to have to look at that. I, the, when we adopted the current year budget for the golf course, we were a year ago, and I think there were still a lot of things that.
The projection was six, the projection was six people and not 21 people.
Well, and we're also going to have sooner, and that was, that was.
And revenue, well, the revenue's.
Revenue's going to offset that.
Yeah, well, total budget, you still can't go over your budget, you could double your revenue, you still couldn't go over your budget expense, so that's, to me, that's the technical issue here, is you, you're capped at 858 through September 30th, no matter what happens. Agreed?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I'm sure. I would like to have a little better handle on the 21 positions, and I know some of them are part-time, but maybe just give us a feel for who's doing what and when, and that just seems like a, a big number all the time.
Yeah. Well, I understand there's, there's, huh? The, the golf course maintenance staff, maintenance on its own, hold on, let me pull this up. Yeah, I got it, I got it, it's a genius spreadsheet. We'll have, in the golf course, just to, just on the, on the maintenance side, we'll have 11 positions, understanding we have to operate seven days a week, so therefore, you're going to be cycling, you're shifting people, and those positions will be, some of them will work eight to, or excuse me, 6 o'clock in the morning to 12, some will work a little bit after that, some will work on the weekends, so that's the reason you have to, if we were just operating five days a week, we'd cut that in half. Operating seven days a week, the only day we're planning to be called, called right now is, is Christmas, so therefore, we'll be operating. Same thing goes for the pro shop, which is the golf operations, golf operations staff will have a manager, two full-time sales clerks, that they'll operate, that's also a seven-day operation, and then it'll have some, uh, part-time golf cart, golf attendants, et cetera, that we'll have in there, that'll be part-time, and/or we may even go and working at doing some voluntary programs to where people can volunteer and get, and if you guys approve it, get some type of free round of golf, or a discounted round of golf, or something like that, to use volunteer help. We've yet to figure all that out, these are just high-level projections. And then to run the concession stand, which this has, it has to run as well, seven days a week, that is, that's an additional four staff, two full-time and two part-time, because it runs seven days a week, and that'll be basically, you know, it'll be, it'll open at seven, it'll open at eight, probably seven or eight, and close this time of year about six, something like that. So due to that seven times a week, you've got to have, and then you're going to have people sick, et cetera, so. Now, will we stay stacked out on employees? Absolutely not. Absolutely not, and I was just talking, Commissioner Hess and I were just talking with, with Shane, and, and he's, he's concerned about getting enough staff as it is to even run the golf course maintenance, a portion of it, and what we're thinking is we might have to probably hire more part-time than we are full-time. So it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge to get those folks, no doubt about it, but golf courses are, they're, they're, they're heavy, and what we, and basically, the, you take your, your operating cost, and you divide it by your expected rounds, which we're expecting 30,000, 30,000 rounds, you divide that, and you get your average, what you average you're going to need to bring in on a, on a base, on a, a per-round basis. And that's the way this is set up, this is the way we set it up in the private sector as well, if we were set up as a private sector. We've discussed memberships, we have a member, we think we're honing in on our membership plan now, that'll help boost, potentially boost this number considerably on the initial, initially, so it can be better from a revenue standpoint. But all the projections, as long as, projections are as good as the, as the customer, and as good as we do, as, as good a job as we do, next year, next year, everything running right, we'll, we're going to, you know, if we do good, we'll, we'll, we're able to pay the general fund back, begin paying them back, if that's what we so choose to do.
Good, good. And what, what percentage of the golf course budget is being supplemented from the sewer fund?
217,000.
Okay.
As of right now. Yeah, and we're going to, we're going to evaluate that as time goes through, because we're, you know, we're new at it, and we got to see what costs, I've asked Shane to what costs, because it's, it's, if we didn't have, weren't playing golf, we'd still have to maintain that facility.
And that's a benefit that golf course has that most golf courses do not have.
And in golfing world, that's called a mulligan, so. And so, yeah, that's a, that's a skip ahead, which is good, so, you know, every year we will be spending, if, if it had to be fully funded by a sewer fund, probably, with everything that's going, probably about $400,000 a year, but that's my, that's our initial projection, I think we're going to end up at.
Well, I think we're really good this year, financially, to be able to do everything, but I'm just worried about our next year, for our predictions for next year. Now, if our predictions stay at the 12%, because that's what we're counting on, the 12% or better, without going up on the ADLORAM tax, we will still be able to do everything and maintain what we're doing now, but, you know, I know I talked to Louie a little bit, and he's going to come up with some ideas, and I haven't even asked the sheriff yet, what are they going to be, their positions that they're going to ask for, for the next budget year, when we're just now trying to hire for this year, you know, for, so if we stay at the 12%, and we kind of can stay, we're still going to be able to fund this, just like we are right now, with no issues.
Right, and I'm sure that, yeah, 12, anything over 12, and we're in good shape, and, you know, that'll really determine, the 12%, anything over that will determine what we'll be able to hire next year.
And everything that you presented today, Brandy, is the same thing the audit committee would get tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll give them a, a brief version of this same presentation, so that they can have enough, and ask questions, and have enough information for them to make a recommendation and vote on it.
Okay. But Jess, I'd like to know what they say after tomorrow, you know, when y'all have that meeting, I'd like to know what.
You're more than welcome to come at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
I might have to, I can't talk, but, you know, I'm going to want to talk.
You can talk, it's a public meeting.
But yeah, we, like I say, we, we don't anticipate unless, you know, we get some, you know, if we get 14 to 16% increase, we may go do some increases of, of personnel, we'll have to see, but, you know, and then the next year, if we continue at the 14%, then that makes it much easier the next year, to be able to increase, so, so we may have to just discuss the timing of those increases without increasing any mileage rates or any doing anything like that.
And what was our increase in the current year after it was corrected, after the mistake was called?
It was about 15, 15.7.
Okay.
That was, I mean, a pretty conservative estimate, huh?
Yeah, and last year, we built, there were more houses, we had more CERs on houses than any time, and that was over, well over 400 houses.
Yep.
So.
Keep rolling, Clyde.
I just want to say thank you, Brandy, for, and obviously, for during the weeks when I would come in and ask you questions. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Is the seesaw the most important presentation of this with regard to what we can move around come the budget cycle-ish? Yep. So we have all of these things we can think about, the constitutional officer budget request, the nonprofits, all of those things we can.
They all have an impact.
Exactly.
Help determine where we go from here.
Okay.
E is that 12%.
Exactly, but it's also on the seesaw.
That's right.
And what was it last year? You said, what was it?
15% with tech and all those stuff, so. We should, and we should continue that well into the, into the future, I would think, and, but, you know, who knows about the time, so.
All right, did it, any more discussion? Anybody from the public? Sheriff, Marie, anybody over there? All in favor? All right, passes unanimously. I started there last night. Discussion issues by commissioners.
We still need to talk about concerns.
I knew you were going to. Tucker Tuesday Chuck, I mean, it's second.
I just keep wanting to, every time.
I know, I know.
They need to come up with some other system.
Okay. Anything from you, sir?
Nothing.
Nothing from me?
Nothing from me.
I'd just like to tell the sheriff and fire chief, thank you for being patient with us, you know, we all have dealt with this self-setback, and you guys absorbed it and hung in there, and so we were on your team the whole time, and I think that was important, so now we'll finally get to where we're.
Motion to adjourn?